Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Work Session this evening, June 16th, 2025. Work Sessions are less formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public hearings, but do allow for public comment at the end of the work session. Please note that all speakers are limited to three minutes and a timer will be set. Council does not take action vote on items during a work session, other than to vote to place an item on the next council meeting for official vote. Council work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and minutes are taken. I am Hazel Livingston, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Todd Law.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Ginny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is Councilmember Will Allen.
Good evening.
Councilmember Allen will lead us in our invocation tonight.
Everyone bow your heads. Oh heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. Thank you for this time that we get to come up here and make decisions for this wonderful town. We want to thank you, Lord, with all the chaos and conflict in the world right now. We are so thankful for the peace and prosperity we have in our lovely little town, Lord. You've been so good to us. Please guide us as we make these decisions for our community to continue to lead that peace and that prosperity. Keep us in the center of your will and the palm of your hand, Lord. We love you, we praise you, and we pray all of this in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
And now Councilmember Smith will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And council met in executive session prior to this meeting where we discussed the following matters. Discussion regarding West Columbia water litigation. Discussion of town prosecutor applicants. We didn't discuss P5, so do I read that? No. Discussion of Personnel Employee Handbook and Compensation Plan and discussion regarding agenda items. No vote was taken. Do I hear a motion to ratify this report?
I move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Do we do this now? After?
After.
Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand. And now I believe we have a motion to authorize something from executive session.
Mayor, based on our actions in executive session, I make a motion to authorize our town attorney and our town administrator to proceed with mediation in the West Columbia versus Town of Lexington matter as discussed in executive session.
Mayor Protem makes the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Smith, seconded. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Are there any deletions of items from tonight's work session?
Oop. That took off.
Hearing none.
I don't need anybody back. I'm good. Yeah. It was trash. I was sliding up there for you to take the trash first. Man.
Hearing none. We normally do our proclamations during council meetings, but we did not get this one in in time, and June is the month for this, so we wanted to get that to them. So we're doing the proclamation of the mayor and town council of the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, recognizing June as gardening month. Whereas gardening enriches lives, fosters a sense of community, and contributes to the beauty and environmental health of our neighborhoods, parks, and public spaces. And whereas the Lexington Garden Club, a proud member of both the Garden Club of South Carolina and the National Garden Clubs, upholds a mission that aligns with statewide and national efforts to promote the love of gardening, floral design, and civic and environmental responsibility. And whereas the National Garden Clubs encourage environmental stewardship and appreciation of natural beauty through education, conservation, and community involvement. And whereas the Garden Club of South Carolina Incorporated is a nonprofit organization whose mission includes the preservation and restoration of historic gardens, conservation and protection of natural resources, and the education of both members and youth in horticultural floral designs and civic beautification. And whereas the Lexington Garden Club actively contributes to the town's charm and sustainability by fostering an interest in gardening, protecting wildflowers, birds, and pollinators, and encouraging community pride through beautification initiatives. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the town council do hereby proclaim the month of June as garden month in the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, encouraging all residents to take part in gardening activities and to recognize the meaningful impact of the Lexington Garden Club and all those who help our town grow in beauty and community spirit. Proclaim the 16th day of June 2025. And I think we have someone here to receive it.
Hey, thank you so much. Your chance. One, two. Don't you say anything. You might just say something at the mic.
Can I even hand you your address if you would, so she could put it in the record?
I'm Cindy Swan, and my address is 302 Longwood Drive in Lexington, 29073. We really appreciate this. Our club has been around for about two years, and there was a group of us that lived in Lexington County, and we wanted to join a club, and there wasn't one. So we reached out to the state club, and probably over a year, the membership, I guess she's the leader of the membership for the state, reached out to all of us and said, hey, we've got enough people that are interested. Do you want to join a club? Make a club. And so we did. And this really means a lot. It helps us get out in the community, and we have lots of other plans going on, so hopefully you'll see us around. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, Mayor.
And thank y'all for all y'all do. I think Gavin, you've attended a meeting, haven't you?
I have, yes.
Moving on to business items. Tonight's first business item is from Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton regarding utility billing improvement.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to get situated here. In May, you all may remember the printing company that the finance department used suddenly closed, and our utility bills didn't get printed and mailed out as normally does. We offer both hard copy bills that are mailed to our customers. We also offer an e-bill option for those that sign up. You do have to opt in for it. We were lucky to find another company to print and mail our bills, but since this incident happened, it's brought about an opportunity for us to encourage people to sign up for electronic bills. I've spoken with some of you, and the thought of encouraging or even incentivizing our customers to sign up for electronic bills through a one-time credit on their bill has come up. And I wanted to bring this to the full council attention for discussion and consideration if you would be interested in doing something like that. Many utility bills, whether it's your phone or gas and electric, offer an opportunity to get a $5 credit on your next bill if you sign up for electronic billing. They'll also offer $5 off if you sign up for automatic payment, so if you do an ACH directly from your bank. So I wanted to bring that up as another option. I've spoken with our town attorney, and I've spoken with Stuart, who's had our bond attorneys review our bond covenants for our utility bonds, and nothing prohibits us from offering something like this. Sometimes there can be restrictions in covenants. I've done a little bit of research. I've asked Stuart and Kathy, our finance director, to do research, and I don't know that any of us found other municipalities in the state that do such a rebate sort of program, so this would be something new for us. So I want to put out there for discussion. We could pick the dollar amount, what the incentive could be, and there's a couple ways we could do it. For existing customers, we could tell them, if you sign up, your next bill, you'll have X dollar credit, five or 10, whatever we choose. Or we can offer for new customers, when they come to sign up for their utilities. Initially, you pay a $25 fee. We could say, if you sign up for e-bills, you only have to pay 20 or 15, or we can adjust the fees that way as well. That way you get it right off the bat. So variety of options. Based on what you all are interested, we can put together a policy and bring it back for your consideration.
So do you need us to give you some guidelines so you can bring a policy back to us for the work session, the next work session, or?
Yes, Mayor. If this is something that you're interested in, we can do for electronic bills. You can also do it for signing up for the automatic draft. And what sort of discount would you be interested in?
So they would be two separate items?
Okay. My recommendation is that they would be two.
Anybody?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
So long run wise, is this just for more efficiency for the town, or is this going to save the town some money in doing these kind of things?
So it's both. It's efficiency not only for the town, but also for the customer. So for example, unfortunately, the mail service isn't always the most reliable. This particular incident was not the mail service. It wasn't the postal service. It was the vendor that we had that had the mailing issue. But regardless, it's more efficient all around. We pay 87 cents for in-town residents when we mail out the utility bill, and out-of-town residents, we pay 79 cents. So that's for all-in postage, printing, et cetera. It's a little bit more for in-town residents because they get town topics printed and included, whereas out-of-town residents don't. E-bill customers, whether you're in-town or out-of-town, you receive town topics. So it's another way for us to get information out. For example, if we have out-of-town residents sign up for e-bills. So it will add up. We spend about $11,000 a month when it comes to printing and mailing our bills.
So how about if you bring us a policy back and let us look at it with maybe $5 off or, I mean, is that?
Mayor?
Yes.
I like the idea. I like the idea of giving an incentive for signing up for direct or auto draft, and then also for the e-bills. I like the idea also of offering it at onset when you sign up for, you know, service. I think these days, almost anywhere you get a paper statement from, minus a few places, they're starting to charge you. My bank loves to hit me with a paper statement fee, and then I have to call them and say, please, please give me my fee back. So I think that this is obviously where billing is heading. So if we can encourage residents by giving them an incentive, but not passing a charge to them, there are certainly residents that would like to keep their statements paper, and I respect that. My mom's one of them. But if we could offer an incentive to reduce those costs and convert them to an e-bill, I think that'd be a great thing.
Thank you for reminding me. I did chat with David, and we can't pass along any fees. I just went ahead and asked. So the cost of our printing is something that, as a cost of doing business.
So what if staff brings us back their recommendation when y'all look at the financial impact and how it looks, what y'all think would be the best?
We can do that.
That okay? So we're not putting this on the agenda. That's just for us to give y'all authority to move forward.
Yes, Mayor.
For the next work session, okay? Now we have discussion of sewer line warranty program. Assistant Town Administrator Stuart Ford.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I contribute tonight to talk about the Service Line Warranties of America program that we've participated in since 2012. One of our council members brought this program, a separate program as well, to us back then for the council's consideration, and this is one that went forward. We also did the prescription drug benefit and did that for a number of years. But the service line warranty program is a program that, the idea originated not only with the council members suggesting, but because we had a number of customers over time were surprised about what their responsibility was for water and sewer service lines that go from the main to the house. And so when the opportunity was presented, it gave us an opportunity to have something that we could tell our customers that, yes, you have this responsibility, but if you choose to, you can select this benefit that would help offset any costs. I remember very well, when we first did it back in 2012, I did first mailing, I had a gentleman meet me down in front of Customer Service and Finance, and he says, can I get this retroactively? Basically is what he was asking. He had a multiple thousand dollar bill that he was concerned about. I told him, I don't think it works that way. Subsequently, he had instituted a 30-day wait period. So this originally started going out every six months or so, twice a year, fall and spring campaign. One time they would promote sewer lines, the next time water lines. And over the years, we began to back it off. We would delay them. We would do it less frequently. In fact, the last time we did it was in December of 2022. Before that was in 2019, as best I can recall. And the reason we did that is because people get these solicitations from many companies, and they began to think that we were hitting them with this a lot. And so even though we were doing it very infrequently, so we kept backing it off. And just the basics of the program is the set fee that started out at $3.66 a month. And that's been pretty well consistently over the years, what the introductory rate was. And for each incident where you have to have a covered repair, it's up to $8,500 that they will pay. That has gone up over the years. There's no deductible, no fees. You call the service line for the company, and they will hire the folks to come out and do the work for you. Over the years, when we do these campaigns, I would get, most of the time, the calls would be referred to me from our customers, and they would want to make sure that this was a legitimate solicitation. And so I would tell them about the program, and we'd say, you know, just as it says in the letter, this is completely voluntary. I'd tell them, my experience is I have a house that's relatively due, so I'm not participating, but I have close relatives who choose to do it. It's a matter of whatever your risk tolerance is. And so I would say 50/50. People would indicate whether they were going to do it or not, and most of the time it was, you know, it was about 50/50. Over the years, I would say, we'd say, no, I don't want to do that, or yes, I'd like to do that. And so we've been involved in it for all these years. And as I mentioned, the last time we did it was in December of '22. And so it most recently went out here in June. That should be the only solicitation they'll receive from this promotion, our customers. And so we wanted, all along through this process, one of the reasons we've delayed is we want to get your feedback on it and whether you would like to see us continue this program. There are many, many products out in the market that are very similar. Different companies offer that. I believe I've received it from Dominion before and other companies. But we participated in it because we wanted to offer the customers this opportunity voluntarily to get some protection, as I said, based upon individuals' risk tolerance. So we have, I got them to give me some statistics back as of March. We've got 850 total plans, and there's 571 customers that are covered right now. They've paid out 500 claims with an average cost of $509. This is the information they provided to us. So it's only for residential. One of the questions we've received over the years is, can I get this for my business? It's only for residential. And so if the customers receive the solicitation, that's the information about it. I believe that the company has long tried to target, as I said earlier, the sewer customer or a water customer, and so you may or may not receive the solicitation as a result. And because of state law, none of our data can be used for commercial purposes, none of the town's data. That's FOIA law, as I understand it. So they have to get their customer information from a third party. And so that is how that goes into, how that is done. They have to match those independently, get the names and addresses to our service areas, and then they mail them out. So that's the long and the short of the program, where it came from, what it does. And we as staff would want to know for sure whether you want to continue the program or if we can, as with the other program that we started many years ago, if it's something that's, this time has passed.
So Stuart, would you please say that one more time? That we do not give them the data for our customers? Is that what?
Correct.
Correct. I just wanted to verify that. And do you know how many they actually mailed out this time?
No, I don't.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Stuart, I have a couple of questions for you. I think it's really important, the point that you just hit on, is that the town is not creating a CSV file of our customer data and transferring that via data share to this company and allowing them to mail out. So I think that's a really important point that I appreciate you bringing up. What I think it's important to explain is that although we may not like it, our data is very easily accessible from Tax Maps. You can go online right now to the town website and click on the GIS map, look at the sewer system, and overlay the tax map, and they can create a mailing list off of that. And that sounds like that's what these third-party services are doing. I would argue that's likely what they did because I didn't receive one, and my neighborhood is new, and we don't get a lot of, we don't get a lot of these mailings. So I think that's really important for the average citizen to understand. I spoke with a citizen on Thursday or Friday, and he has a special needs daughter, and his daughter got the mailing. And I can understand how upsetting that was and why he was so upset. And as I thought through this more, it dawned on me that that's, that is likely how that happened. Now, it probably didn't come from the tax map, but it came from one of these list brokers where they purchased the data, and somehow his child's information is on that list broker's data. So I just wanted to set that up there. But I did have a couple of questions for you. Where did the, it dates back many, many years. Where did it, why did we decide this company? I mean, there are many companies on the market. So why this company? And then, I understand that they're purchasing the data, but we are authorizing them to use the town logo, I would assume. So it makes it appear that the town is in the insurance business. Where did that decision lie to allow them to use the town logo?
So that was a part of the program from the start, is that it would be, although the town doesn't administer the program at all, the only thing that we've done is, you know, look at the copy and prove it over the years. And so the program came from a member of council, you know, seeing it sponsored and willing to offer it to the community. And so that's where it started from, and the use of the logo was to differentiate it from others, showing that we did participate in it. That was part of what we wanted to do, is to show that we were offering this to our customers. That was the intent from the start, and, you know, that's what council wanted to do at the time.
Now, is it my understanding that this time, the company came back to you and asked for approval to send it, and did not wait for your approval, for you to speak with council, and they just took it upon themselves to do the next mailing? And that's why, you know, we really weren't aware that this mailing was going out?
Yes. Apparently their protocols changed. We had told them we wanted to have a specific conversation with you and get council's affirmative, yes, we want to participate or we won't stop. And through, there must have been some miscommunication because their emails, instead of being, asking for affirmative approval, it basically says, if we don't hear from you otherwise, we're moving forward. That is not how it has ever worked in the past. They've always respected our desire to delay or to wait till the next cycle, and it has always been that they would wait for a specific authorization from us. And that change, frankly, is something I miss, that they changed it. But the program has not fundamentally changed. What our customers receive is consistent with what we provided before, terms and conditions.
Okay. Thanks.
Let me ask this question also. Do we get any kind of compensation for this?
As a part of the program, it's 10% to the entity, and that has always gone back into the water sewer utility. That's the contract that was.
Well, I can tell you, I don't like them using the logo because I don't like anybody using the logo except for official, which I guess if it's a vote and everybody wants them to use it, it's an official vote for them to use it. But I just don't like our logo being used unless the majority of the councils decided for it to be used. So I guess that will have to be decided if we're going to continue with them on whether they use the logo or not. So with that said, I guess we need, do we have to make a motion and put this on the agenda to vote whether we're going to keep them or not?
Madam Mayor, council, yes, it would need to go on your next, an agenda where you would need to take action on whether to cancel the agreement or move forward with certain conditions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Question. Well, yeah, I was just trying to do the math here. I think it's, somebody said about $3.60 a month, right? And average repair bill's $5.80. It's about 8%. So I mean, you're, it's not, it's not a crazy number. You're spending $43 a year to insure yourself against a potential $600 repair. Insurance is usually significantly, it's a lot more expensive than that. But at the same time, it feels to me like this company acted in bad faith in proceeding without our explicit permission. And I do think, I think it's just a bad look to have us endorsing any company when there is a competitive landscape. Government should never be in the business of picking winners and losers. We should be in the business of creating an equal playing field where capitalists can get out there and duke it out, and maybe, maybe multiple insurance companies can solicit and, and the best man wins, or woman. So I would certainly make a motion to put the review of this relationship on our next agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, yeah. Is there any more discussion?
Can I ask one more question, Madam?
Sure.
You said it is, let's say roughly $40 a month, and there's 500 active?
$40 a year.
A year.
Yeah, I'm sorry. $4 a year, and there's 500 active. So that's about 20.
71 is what you said, I think.
I'll just use round numbers. So $20,000 of revenue generated for that company, and we receive how much in response?
10%.
So we're making $2,000 a year. The only point that I wanted to make off of this is, it's sort of what is, is sort of what Councilmember Barnes just made, is that we are endorsing a product by putting our town logo on there. That just gives me heartburn. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of other companies out there on the market. And they don't need us to go out to a list broker to buy the data. They just need us for our logo. So we're essentially selling our logo for $2,000 a year. And I have an issue with that.
I do too. So I do have a question for y'all to have an answer before we come back next time, is can the people that have it, can they still keep it if they want to without us being connected?
Now, ma'am, I'm looking at the agreement that was signed back in 2012. It's a non-exclusive grant to use the logo while this contract is in effect. So as soon as the town, if the town chooses to terminate this contract, then that right to use the logo goes away.
Right. Okay, but I meant, can the people that are already buying this, the 571 that are customers of theirs, can they continue to stay with the company if they choose to without us having anything to do with it?
Yes.
Okay. 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 So I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of putting it on the agenda for July, raise your right hand. And I think it's unanimous. Yes, it's unanimous. So that's, that's it. That was quick. Any comments from public regarding items listed on tonight's agenda? Any questions from the news media? We don't have any of those. Any comments from staff?
Mayor?
Wow.